We'll start with the flag salute. Commissioner Sheila, would you lead us in the flag salute? Next item?
Roll call. Commissioner Flowers.
Present.
Commissioner Remick is absent this evening. Commissioner Sheila.
Here.
Commissioner Shamininko.
Here.
Commissioner Shishko.
Here.
Vice Chair Price.
Present.
Chair Van Duiker.
Here.
Thank you.
And the next item, please?
Consent calendar approval of minutes for March 22nd, 2023.
I'm sorry, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from the last meeting. I don't recall the days, the 20?
March 22nd.
March 22nd.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Next item, please.
Public comment. Under Government Code 54954.3, members of the audience may address the commission on any agenda item within the jurisdiction of the commission or on any agenda item. Those wishing to speak on non-agenda items will be called upon at the beginning of the meeting. Those wishing to speak for or against an agenda item will be called upon after the presentation by the City Planning Department and applicant for that agenda item.
Are there any speakers for non-agenda items?
I have no speaker cards.
Okay. Next item, please.
Public hearing, 5A, 8020 Twin Oaks Avenue parcel map. Subdivide and five existing acre parcel into two lots, 3.38 and 1.52 acres with access to the new parcel from Manger Way. The project is exempt from SEQA Section 51315, Minor Land Divisions of the California Environmental Code Act. Allison Bermudez is the planner.
Good evening, Chair. Nice to be here before you tonight. Allison Bermudez represents the Planning Division in this applicant tonight. As mentioned, this is a parcel map for 8020 Twin Oaks Avenue. As shown here, the large five-acre parcel just on the south side of Twin Oaks, east of Sunrise Boulevard. This is owned by Mrs. Robertson, who owns this large property. She's owned it for a number of years. She's requesting to subdivide it into two lots. The lot is in the RD1 zone, which means minimum lot size is one acre. It is five acres, so it would be subdivided into two lots, one about three acres and one just under two acres. The general plan designation for this is very low density. There is no planned rezone or any development with this project. It's just a land division to subdivide the two parcels. Here's an aerial view of the site. As you can see, there's basically two parts to the parcel, the north side of the creek. The creek cuts just about two-thirds to one-third, cuts it in half. Her existing home is on the north side of the creek. And then on the south side, currently there is also another home. So the new lot line will follow the center of that creek, and that would provide each of those two existing homes to reside on their own parcel. As you can see, the south side of the creek, there is no access to that north side, what we're going to call Parcel One, which fronts on Twin Oaks. So to that existing home that's on the south side of the creek, they're going to use the current access that they use today, which is Manger Way, which kind of turns north on that little sub-street. And then there'll be the easement that they use today will be paved to fire standards to access that existing home. Here's the proposed map that shows the property outline, the existing home on the north, what we're going to call Parcel One. The smaller orange box, Parcel Two, is the other home. As you can see, this one has the hash lines for the fire department turnaround that's required. So Manger Way dead ends there. They drive across their parcel. They also own that parcel that's 008, the one to the south. So they would drive across that, and then the fire turnaround then to access the home that's on the south side of the creek. There's a little pedestrian bridge that gives them pedestrian access to the north, but there's no vehicle access. As mentioned, the project does meet the requirements of the subdivision map act and is exempt from SEQA under minor land divisions. It is consistent with the general plan. The zoning code meets the lot sizes required for the RD1 zone, the density and all the access requirements. The project, the approval of this project is just a map to divide the land. There is no development proposals considered at this time. My understanding is the property owner is just letting it for family, to give her family the south side. They don't propose any development, but should in the future something be developed here, they will have to go through the standard development review process. And before you are the recommended motions for the project, the applicant and the property owner are both here. Should you have any additional questions?
Does the commission have any questions for staff?
I actually do. Thank you. Allison, could you just maybe illustrate? I don't know if you've got a pointer or a mouse on the, there we go. Could you just illustrate the access to that second property again?
Sure. Let me show you on this one, then I'll go back to the aerial. So Manger Way is a developed street here, forget-me-nots to the south. Manger Way makes this short little stub, and then it dead ends. And then there's an easement, an existing easement that crosses this parcel then to this one.
Okay.
And actually, I think I did put a picture in here. Let me pull this up. So this will give you a visual. So this is the end of Manger. There is a blockade here to the right that's going to remain. And then this is their existing access to that home that's on the south side. This is the part that will be paved as per fire department standards. It'll just be their current driveway that they currently use will be paved.
Is there a development to the right of that as well?
There is a home to the right here. It's a really large parcel, also goes all the way up to Twin Oaks with the creek on it as well. But their, I think their access is all off of Twin Oaks. They don't access Manger.
Okay. And the other parcel then does have the current access off of Twin Oaks?
The Parcel One, the one on the north side of the creek, yes. It will have all its current access off of Twin Oaks.
Okay, great, good. Okay, I'm clear. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for staff from the commission? I'll open the public hearing. Does anyone have any comments, please? You can step.
Years ago, when it was county.
I'm sorry. Can you tell us your name for the record?
Jerry Joyer, J-O-Y-E-R.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fryer.
Years ago, there was a development that went in kind of at the end of Charlotte. And we objected because there was, the way the property was set up, there would be a throughway on Charlotte. And so we we objected. And then the developer came to us and said, well, if I promise to build a property blocking off that side street, will that be okay with you? And we said yes. And then the fire department objected. And so the developer came to us and said, I will build a property. I will give access to fire engine one width wide. Will that satisfy you? I said, yes. So I'd like to ask if the planning commission can set up the property so that the building site will block the access to Twin Oaks?
So you're concerned that this will block the access to Twin Oaks? This lots?
I want it to block the access to Twin Oaks.
So maybe I can explain how the lot is configured. So this aerial here shows the map as it is today. So outlined here in the orange is the property outline. There is a creek that cuts this property in half, this blue line. And so what we're doing is adding this parcel line that's going to follow this creek. So one parcel is this parcel that's on the north side of the creek that fronts on Twin Oaks currently. There is no change to Twin Oaks or any change to this parcel that fronts on Twin Oaks. And then the remainder of this parcel, the south side, will continue to use its current access off of Manger. So there is no access from Manger to Twin Oaks as there is a creek here, and there is no vehicle access to get from Manger through to Twin Oaks.
There's no access for the, across the creek?
There is no access across the creek, only a pedestrian bridge for foot. No vehicle access. So there is no street being put in with this project.
I would like a commitment from the chamber that the building site will be built to block the access to Twin Oaks.
Again, not seeing that there is an access to Twin Oaks.
There is not an existing, according to this young lady.
Correct. The only access is what is there right now, which the property owner uses, is her driveway off of Twin Oaks that gets to her home. That's the only access that is with this project and proposed.
I believe the gentleman is asking for the planning commissions committing to, in the future, not allowing this connection. Is that correct?
That is correct.
That's correct.
Any future accesses would come with a development proposal. And at this time, there is no development proposal. This is only a division of property line. So there's no new structures or any development with this project.
I would like a commitment from the chamber that this property will be set up just like the developer set up the other one, so there's no access except for fire, period.
I'm sorry, I don't believe that we can give that reassurance, but I believe that any further development would come up in front of the planning commission, so it could be addressed at that time if there was concern.
Okay.
Thank you. Are there any other comments on this matter?
The applicant is here, if you wanted to invite them up.
Would the applicant like to come speak?
Good evening, Planning Commission. I'm John Marcia, MJM Engineering. I have no comments really, but I'm here if you have any questions for me, except to say that Allison, I really am fond of her. She's a fantastic lady and have hailed a lot. That's my comment.
Thank you. No questions? No questions?
Thanks so much.
Thanks. And I will close the public hearing. Can I have a motion?
I motion that we adopt Resolution 23-04 determining the project is categorically exempt from SEQA per Section 15315, the minor land divisions of the California Environmental Quality Act.
I'm just glad we're taking them separately. So I think your motion was just for that first item?
Yes, first item.
We'll wait until the second one after.
Mm-hmm.
Second?
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Flowers, seconded by Commissioner Price. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I'll make a motion on the second item to approve a tentative parcel map to allow the division of an existing five-acre parcel into two parcels, 3.38 and 1.62 acres in size located at 8020 Twin Oaks Avenue, subject to the findings contained in the staff report and the conditions the approval provided as attachment to.
Second.
Motion was made by Commissioner Flowers and seconded by Commissioner Shishko. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Any determination by the planning commission may be appealed to the city council by filing a written notice of appeal and the appropriate filing fees, $250, with the city clerk not later than 10 calendar days after the date on which the determination is made. Next item?
Item 5B, 8540 Auburn Boulevard, Starbucks Retail Center. The project proposes construction of a new Starbucks retail building with a drive-through service. The proposed Starbucks building is 2,041 square feet in area with outdoor and indoor seating in addition to the proposed drive-through. The new building will feature a 400-square-foot plaza with outdoor seating. For patrons of Starbucks, the project will remain the portion of the existing retail building where T-It and Wagtails are located, 5,623 square feet, but the proposed removal of the portion of the building occupied by the liquor store. The project is categorically exempt from SEQA Section 15332 of the California Environmental Quality Act. Project planner, Allison Bermudez.
Good evening, Commission. Allison Bermudez with the Planning Division here with this project. Project's been a long time in the works, so we're happy to have it before you. But I'm actually going to turn it over to my colleague here, Kevin. Kevin has been a consultant with us for a while. He helps us out in times when we're overburdened with projects. So I pass this project on to Kevin, and he's been working very closely with the applicant over the past several months. So I'll let him roll through the presentation, and then we'll both be here, as well as applicant is here, should we need any additional comments or questions. I'll turn it over to Kevin. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. Good evening, Chair, and members of the commission. As Allison said, I'm Kevin Payne. I'm a planning consultant, and I'll be walking the commission through a brief presentation on the Starbucks Retail Center at Auburn and White Avenue. Tonight's actions include the consideration of a use permit for a drive-through use, a design review permit for a new structure of approximately 2,240 square feet that would house a Starbucks, and for the renovation of the overall site located, which retains an existing retail component of about 5,600 square feet. Also includes a tree permit in addressing the protected trees that are on-site and the impacts created by this project. And lastly, it talks, speaks to the environmental determination for this project. Just as a brief orientation on the site, this piece of property is the first parcel within the city of Citrus Heights that is directly south of the intersection of Auburn Boulevard and White Avenue. It consists of three different parcels that are approximately 2.2 acres in overall area, although only a portion of the site is proposed for development. The eastern side of the site, which is currently vacant, would remain vacant as part of this current proposal. Just as way of describing the surrounding uses, to the north, the parcel that is directly at the corner of Auburn and White is in the city of Roseville and is controlled by the applicant, and the applicant does have future plans for developing that site within the city. Also, the Hostile Lee Academy, and then some residential uses that are further to the northeast of the site. Going, moving to the eastern portion of the site, kind of the southeast corner, there is actually an existing residential structure that obtains access to that residential structure through the commercial site. And then further to the south is existing commercial with commercial development located on the western perimeter of the site itself. So the existing general plan designation for this piece of property is, has been identified as part of the Auburn Boulevard specific plan as a general commercial piece of property. It is also identified as part of the Gateway Commercial District itself, so it's focused on enhancing this entry point into Citrus Heights with commercial uses. The special planning area, as I noted, is Gateway District, and the zoning is consistent with the general plan designation of general commercial. This general commercial designation allows for drive-through use with the approval of a use permit and the commercial coffee shop and retail uses that are proposed as part of the project site itself. Integral to this project is the city's future plans for completing the Auburn Complete Streets project. That is anticipated to start in 2024. As part of that project, this piece of property, as noted, is the entry point to the city of Citrus Heights on the northern end. Frontage improvements will be installed. A full traffic signal will be installed at the intersection of Auburn and the driveway that actually accesses the commercial site, as well as underground utilities will be undergrounded, the overhead lines that run both on the northern end and the eastern end of the site, and a critical water line extension will be accomplished as part of that project. So reiterating some of the key components of the project, it proposes the construction of approximately 2,240 square-foot Starbucks building with a drive-through service. It looks to retain approximately 5,600 square feet of existing retail buildings that currently supports T-It Up and Wag and Tails. The project also proposes to demolish the existing liquor store that is on-site, as well as the vacant coffee kiosk. As part of the project, the revitalization of the site would include updated landscaping, lighting, parking, and other facilities that are associated with new development. The overall hours of operation, as required by the use permit, are a 5:00 AM opening to a midnight closing time. In order to ensure that the drive-through itself did not create traffic impacts to Auburn Boulevard or the surrounding area, the city requested that the applicant prepare a traffic impact study, and we'll talk about what was contained as part of that analysis. To give the commission just an overview of the site plan itself as proposed, you can see the existing retail that is located on the southern boundary. The access driveway from Auburn provides the primary access, but there are also two additional access points that allow for traffic to circulate through and reach White Avenue. This is through both the applicant-controlled parcel with the future development of a quick serve restaurant use in the future and the Hostile Lee Beauty Salon Academy as well. The site itself currently is primarily an asphalt-paved parking lot with very little relief as far as landscaping is concerned. So as this site plan indicates, there will be a number of improvements as far as the landscape and aesthetic from Auburn Boulevard. The one thing I would point out as far as the circulation of the drive-through is that it wraps around the building, basically entering from the north side of the building, going parallel to Auburn Boulevard on the west side, and then exiting through the conclusion of the drive-through on the south end of the building itself. So the traffic impact study took two approaches. The first was to take a look at whether or not there was some type of interim measure that could be accomplished that would allow this project to move forward on an interim before the signal was constructed. Unfortunately, as we looked at this development and the impacts that it would have, it became very clear, and given kind of the lane configurations that exist out there with White Avenue, that the traffic signal was a necessity in order to mitigate the traffic impacts from this site and provide clear circulation pattern. The study also identified that there were four parking spaces in front of T-It Up that needed to be removed in order to get the adequate throat depth for stacking of vehicles. That has also been conditioned as part of this project. Additionally, on the northern side of the project, in the area controlled by the applicant and the Hostile Lee Academy, there are four additional parking spaces that needed to be eliminated in order to get through circulation through the site. And one of the recommendations for future, when the quick serve restaurant comes in through Roseville, is to look at reconfiguring both of those sites as far as the parking layout is concerned to get better efficiency and circulation. And the last item that was noted as part of the parking analysis was that if there became a problem or an issue with the stacking piling up into the drive aisles and blocking the drive aisles, that the city had the ability to work with the proprietor on controlling and changing the way the traffic functions in order to avoid those conflicts. So parking calculations were looked at as part of this project, and one thing that was not anticipated as part of the staff report was the elimination of the four spaces that came out of the traffic impact study. As required, the project is required to provide 34 on-site parking spaces, and currently it is, with the removal of those spaces, it's only going to provide 29 spaces. But in order to encourage development along the Auburn Boulevard, the city a few years back made the concession that there was the ability to do parking reductions under certain circumstances, and one of those was you could get a 15% parking reduction if you were within a quarter mile of a transit, transfer facility. This piece of property is basically a block away from the existing transit facility that is located off of Orlando, so it qualifies for that 15%. With the 15%, it provides for 29 space requirement and 29 spaces on-site. Just touching briefly on the proposed building, it utilizes a variety of textures and elements in order to bring interest to the architecture. It uses bricks, stucco, metal veneer, and teak wood vertical siding as well. The applicant has revised the actual elevations of this building to put a corner piece along Auburn Boulevard to enhance and raise the level of attention as you're coming southbound on Auburn Boulevard. In addition to that, they added some faux windows in order to make it feel like it was more of a retail front along that Auburn Boulevard frontage. So the existing retail, when it first was proposed by the applicant, did not have a lot of elements that tied it back into the Starbucks building. Their designer has gone back and actually prepared new elevations, which indicate very similar color palette, integration of similar materials, and really further enhancing and tying the two buildings that will occupy the site together. Other modifications included responding to staff's concerns about Other modifications included responding to staff's concerns about the screen wall. Since it abuts Auburn Boulevard, we wanted to pay attention to screening off the cars as they were stacking and ordered to place their orders and pick them up. The applicant came back in and proposed that some of the stucco elements be added to a mesh fence. Staff still has some concerns with that, just given that it will take time for the landscaping to actually mature to a point where it will block the vehicles. So, the condition number three that was originally within the design review permit still stands and essentially gives staff the ability to work with the applicant in coming up with something that does a better job of blocking the vehicle traffic immediately. And then, the next modification that the, the architect designer has addressed was the landscape strip adjacent to the eastern boundary was a six foot eight inch landscape strip that has been modified on the site, site plan to meet city standards of 10 feet in width. Moving on to the tree permit, overall, 51 trees were surveyed, both onsite and adjacent to the property. Thirty-seven trees were identified as part of the overall project area. That includes the vacant remainder that's on, on the eastern side of the project. There's actually 17 trees that are within the, the development envelope, and this, this project proposes to remove nine protected trees. Of these nine protected trees, only seven are eligible for mitigation. The overall mitigation at this point is 93 inches of overall oak tree mitigation. There was noted in the staff report, one tree that got left out, tree number 1494, and prior to building permit, the arborists will need to do an update. So, these mitigation meas, these mitigation numbers could, could change by the time it gets to the building permit stage in addressing that tree. As far as the overall analysis, the project itself meets the goals of the general plan, and the findings can be made for the use permit, design review permit, and the tree permit, as it complies with the city's provisions within its zoning code. The SEQA analysis that has been provided is being recommended as an infill exemption, and this is mainly due to the fact that the project is under five acres in size. It's surrounded by urban uses. It's consistent, as I noted earlier, with both the general plan and the zoning, and there are no significant impacts associated with the development of the property. At this point in time, the motions have been provided for the, for the planning commission. I would note that we did receive some level of public comment. That's been included in your packet. There was also recent correspondence today that came in as an email, and that's been pro, provided to the commission as well. I'm here and available to answer any questions, and I know the applicant and her team are in the audience and can hopefully speak to any of the commission's questions. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Do any of the commission have any questions for staff? It does not appear so. At this point, I'll open the public meeting. Would the applicant like to come speak on the subject? And state your name for the...
Hi, I'm Kelly Hough with Coastal Star Properties. I have been working with Allison and Kevin for several months, and we've been enjoying their working relationship, and I think that their input has improved the overall site. So, I'm here to answer any questions, along with our architect or engineer as well. Thanks.
I actually do have a question. You went too fast, I was gonna ask.
Oh, sorry.
But that's okay. So, am I clear that the Starbucks proposal project would be in sharing a wall with the T-It Up facility there or, or not?
No, the T-It Up building is a standalone building.
It's a standalone.
It's a standalone, mm-hmm. It's, it's that existing building on the south.
Okay, and that's the one that houses T-It Up and...
Wagon Tales.
The Wagon Tales, okay. And they're not going anywhere. They're not being demolished. So, I was confused about the demolished, what part needs to be demolished then?
There's an existing liquor store that's partial, there's like, it's connected, the roof is connected to the, to the long rectangular building. Let's see.
Okay. And that's where, so the Starbucks would then go there? Is that what I'm understanding, or it's a separate...
The Starbucks is going where the, the mouse is.
Okay, so it has nothing to do with the existing building there, but there is some demolition happening on that side of the building?
Yes.
For the purpose of...
We needed to remove the liquor store portion because the site wouldn't allow any additional parking if we didn't.
Because of the parking?
Yes.
Okay, all right, I'm clear on that now. Okay, so that's, I, I, for some reason, in my mind, had that that has something to do with the construction of the actual new site, proposed site, but it's not?
No, correct.
It's just the parking, okay.
Yes.
I understand, okay, clear. So, you're not showing, sharing any adjoining walls? So, what's coming out is the kiosk that was sitting there that's been empty for quite some time, I understand, the little coffee kiosks that's been...
Yes, yes.
Okay, and it's not affecting the dirt parking lot that's sitting out in front of the, the, the hair, the...
Correct.
The college there, I guess, right?
Mm-hmm, correct.
Because that's a future proposal going in there or something like that. Okay, so you will have a neighbor. Will there be access between that new development and the Starbucks at some point then?
Yeah, the blue arrows indicate where the actual future access will be. It currently exists out there now, just, it, it's not really formalized. And then, attachment 10 of your packet has an overall site plan that indicates the potential future development on the applicant's property that they own in Roseville and how they all link together.
Okay, all right. But it's not, it's not a continuation of this particular building at any point. It will be a separate entity's entity.
Mm-hmm.
Clear. Okay, it's clear. Thank you.
I just, I just want some clarification on the email that was sent. Have we received any opposition from the Greenhouse Cafe or T-It? Have any of those business owners come in and talked about how this would impact their businesses?
No.
No?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Question, I, I, reading through the packet, I believe there was, so, a, at this point, we're just basically working on, you know, Starbucks and, you know, that property, the one on the corner that's possibly gonna come in the future, nothing right now, right?
Correct.
I, I think I saw something about potentially like Panda or something like that. That was just a theoretical thing, right?
I'll let the applicant speak to the use.
That would be with the City of Roseville, not the City of Citrus Heights. So, that would be a completely separate application.
So, this property is actually, they own the larger parcel, but it's actually split where a portion of it is in the City of Citrus Heights, and then the portion to the north that's currently vacant is also on the end, but that's actually in the jurisdiction of Roseville. So, when that side develops, it will be processed through the City of Roseville, but looking down the path, knowing that they're gonna have to work together, right, the two sites with access and parking and so forth, and since they control both parcels, we did have the traffic analysis look at that future development, how it would impact the site. So, we did consider that future development, but it's not within the discussion tonight.
And that part of the project, is that coming in the future or...
Yes, in the future. We haven't started any of the planning yet.
Allison, you might show where the boundary is for the city, for the City of Citrus Heights.
Sure.
You, you could have done it wrong.
So, this orange or the yellow line across this aerial is the city, actually, city, city, county, county.
Yeah.
Line, because portion of that to the north is Placer County, a portion of it is City of Roseville, and then we're just to the south of that and follow that orange line. So, it's kind of a unique area, being the multi jurisdictions that are there, but our project that we're reviewing is just the city side, which would be to the south of that yellow line, which would be the new Starbucks building and the remodel of the existing building.
Can, can you show, or maybe the applicant can show the actual drive-through traffic or the pattern that will exist once they get the drive-through?
It's pretty hard to see on this, but maybe Allison, you can kind of point it out.
So, here is existing driveway that's currently serves the same center where the new light would go to control traffic in and out of the center. So, a new traffic signal here, people would enter here, this is T-It here to the south, that building, and they would go north, and they enter here along this one, there's a dual lane drive-through. So, two lanes that merge into one lane, and then they exit out here along the south side of the building. So, two, the two-order lane merge into one and then exit here from Starbucks, and then they can leave the site going north up to White, or assumably going out here and going back to the signal to go, to go north or south.
So, would they be, essentially, when they exit the driveway, would they be crossing traffic that's potentially coming into the building?
There, this is a dual lane here, so they would, could exit here, and they could take this lane to the south. There is, it is wide enough for a car to go north.
Go north, okay. Very good, thank you. I did have one other question, too. Can you, there's been some concern that there are numerous Starbucks in one, several of them located in, in close proximity to this one. Do you know where the other two locations are, or three locations are, the closest locations are to this particular one?
I do not know off the top of my head. I know there's one on Auburn and Garfield, but I think that that's a few miles north.
So, the one, one reference in the email is north of Auburn in the City of Roseville over the overcrossing, there's one at Kirby in Riverside.
On the other side.
It's probably the closest one.
Okay.
But it is, you know, across the overcrossing and on the other side of the freeway. Other than that, I think the closest one would be to the, to the south on Auburn and Old Auburn.
This would be the closest one we have here in Citrus Heights then?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a question on that, piggybacking on yours. Just wondering, let's say theoretically, yeah, there's too many Starbuckses. Is that even in our jurisdiction to say, yeah, no on this one? My understanding was that, that's not something we can decide on, it was, right?
Yeah, we don't look at the use itself. We look at the zoning, and basically, the zoning says that you can have a coffee shop restaurant within the general commercial designation. The drive-through component does require a use permit as part of that, but the use itself is, conforms with the zoning.
Yeah, thank you.
Are there any other questions for the applicant or staff?
No, I just had a, I just want to make a comment that, you know, I particularly like Starbucks, I, I enjoy Starbucks, I enjoy the convenience of Starbucks. I do feel for the two existing other privately owned tea and, and the one across the street, too. I do feel for those smaller businesses that might be impacted by this to some degree. So, I'm always torn on matters like this, but, but I love to see the improvement in that area. That's an eyesore in that one particular corner and has been for some time. So, it will be very nice to see some improvements there. So, I'm split on this one, but for those reasons, so, but I appreciate you coming tonight and present, and good, great presentation. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
If there's no other public comments, I'll close the public meeting.
One thing I just wanted to clarify, that the project won't occur or develop until such time the city does the street improvements, so we're looking, you know, a little bit down the road, so we're, great to have this on, go through the process, be approved, but you won't see the improvement start until the street improvements start.
Can you put the motions up?
Yeah, and similarly, Chair, I think we should take them one at a time.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution, Resolution Number 23-04, finding that the project is categorically exempt from SEQA per Section 15332 of the California Environmental Quality Act infill development.
I'll second.
The motion was made by Commissioner Price and seconded by Commissioner Shee, Sheila. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I guess I'll make a motion to approve a use permit to allow a new retail building with drive-through services based upon the findings listed in the staff report and the conditions of approval listed in Exhibit A.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Price, seconded by Commissioner Sheila. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Approve a design review permit to allow for the construction of a new 2,241 square foot retail building based upon the findings listed in the staff report and the conditions of approval listed in Exhibit A.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Sheila, seconded by Commissioner Shiskow. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Approve a tree permit to allow the removal of protected trees addressed in the conditions of approval for the development of the current project.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Sheila, seconded by Commissioner Shiskow. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Any determination by the planning commission may be appealed to the city council by filing a written notice of appeal and the appropriate filing fees of $250 with the city clerk, not later than 10 calendar days after the date on which the determination is made. And, next item?
Regular calendar item 6A, Capital Improvement Program, CPI. Presentation of the Capital Improvement Program. Staff recommends that the planning commission find the City of Citrus Heights Capital Improvement Program con, conforms with the general plan. Staff presentation by Regina Cave.
Good evening, Commission. I'd like to introduce Regina Cave, our General Services Director, who's gonna take the next item and walk you through the CIP.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. Regina Cave, General Services Director. I think I probably have presented before some of you in previous years, but I think some of you are new faces, so, nice to meet you. So, our capital improvement program, it is a five-year planning tool that we use to plan our projects out here in the city. Years past, we used to put our capital projects as well as maintenance and other special projects, general purpose or facilities, but we've recently streamlined it so just to identify our transportation, stormwater, and those types of capital improvement projects. Again, it covers a five-year planning horizon. We have converted to align with our two-year planning, or excuse me, our two-year budget cycle. The CIP does not allocate funds, but it aligns with the budget, and it is pre-approved essentially from the budget standpoint through council before we actually include it into the CIP. So, they are reviewed for consistency with the general plan, and so planning commission's role and responsibility tonight is not to approve budget or projects, but to make findings that the CIP as a whole aligns with the general plan. So, here's kind of our five-year look ahead, just to show the magnitude of our projects that we have planned for the next five years. Staff have been very successful at working on securing grant funds to help support our five-year CIP. And so, just to kind of do an overview, I'm not gonna go each project in the CIP, but just kind of highlight some of our major projects. So, our Arcade Cripple Creek Trail Project, this is previously known as our Electric Greenway Project, covers 2.9 miles of multi-use trail between Sunrise Boulevard, so connecting the Arcade Creek Preserve that is owned by SRPD, just south of Sayonara, and will connect all the way to the northeast quadrant of Citrus Heights off of Wachtel, using primarily a smud electric corridor easement. Connect to Seven Parks, several schools, again, Sunrise Marketplace, and construction did start last year, we're well over 50% done and are expected to conclude this fall. Project is derived by various funding sources, include a large active transportation program grant and augmented by some local funds. And this is a project that supports council's three-year strategic goal to maintain public infrastructure and enhance alternative modes of transportation, which again aligns with the general plan. Arcade Cripple Creek Trail Project, this is an extension, this is a project that staff successfully... successfully have been awarded grant funds for. And this is to connect from the Arcade Creek Preserve, again off of Sayonara, to connect over to Mariposa Avenue, which is about a half-mile trail, provided by, again, an active transportation planning grant. And in this case, we've been successful to be able to utilize staff time to be able to service as matching funds. So it frees up other available local funds that we have for other projects. And this project also supports council strategic goals. Our Auburn Boulevard Complete Streets, from the previous applicant that we're speaking of, the Starbucks project up at the north end. This project will start hopefully up at the north end as well and work its way down towards Rush Park. Construction is scheduled to start in 2024. We have been authorized by Caltrans that we can go ahead and initiate our request to allocate our funds and begin construction. So we will, staff are working on the bid documents, and hopefully we'll see that out to bid later part of this year. Project is supported by various grant funds. And we've actually just recently been advised that SECOG is making recommendations for additional funding to help bridge the final gap in this project. And this also does support council strategic goal. Cripple Creek Creek Bank Restoration, we don't just do transportation, but we also do stormwater. So this project addresses two different locations along Cripple Creek that have deficiencies, both in the natural preserve areas as well as concrete line channels. So we're going to look at some alternatives for some of the creek bank stabilization and restoration, and hopefully enhance some of the existing natural features within those areas. And this is stormwater utility funds that supports this project. Our Gateway Activation Plan is another extension of the trail. This will provide for design and studying what our options are for connectivity, where the existing project that we have under construction, the Electric Greenway or Arcade Cripple Creek Trail Project, where it ends over at Wachtel, just south of Patalo, and to connect north up to Old Auburn, both to our existing trail, and also to provide connectivity into Roseville. This funding came from a Senate Appropriations Grant, and again, continues to support council strategic goal. Our Old Auburn Complete Streets Phase One, this project is under design and has been funded through the design right of way and environmental. However, we will be seeking future construction dollars to actually deliver the project. This phase of the project is funded by ATP grants and also augmented by local measure A traffic safety funds and also supports council strategic goal. Our Payment Restoration, this is a project or a program, rather, that we set aside funds every year. And then, this next year will be our first time of setting aside general fund dollars to support overall payment restoration throughout the city, based upon council direction. This last year, we're actually looking at kind of pivoting our approach. And instead of just looking at the worst streets, looking at streets that are in dire need, that serve a lot more traffic. So looking at arterials and collectors that might not necessarily already have grant funds to support those locations. A lot of the times, what we're finding is grant funds support more of the complete streets, which you're adding in other amenities such as separated bike lanes, additional pedestrian improvements and enhancements, which are great to support our overall multimodal needs. However, we have a lot of just pavement needs. And in order to do that, you typically have to address it just with your local funds, because grant dollars do not support just pavement needs. So we've got various funds to support this program, all local transportation funds, gas tax, measure A. We also include a little bit of CBG and stormwater to help support any of those ADA and drainage improvements as well. Roseville Road, Butternut Drive Safety Improvements, this is a new grant that staff were very successful in securing in this last cycle. And this is to provide enhancements over at Roseville Road and Butternut Drive for left turns on the southbound from Roseville Road into Butternut Drive. This also includes faceplates. So if you've noticed around town the last couple of years, you've seen some of the highlighted framing around some of the traffic signals. That's new Caltrans standard and provides for enhanced visibility and safety for all users. And typically with these types of projects, which is funded by H-SIP, you need to have something which is called a systemic issue to help increase your rating on your grant in order to successfully secure those funds. And so that's why there's, seems kind of odd to have a Roseville Road improvements plus the back plates, but that's why we have that. And then San Juan Avenue Complete Streets, phases one A and one B, again, another heavy lift by staff, but very successful, and that we're receiving additional funds in this next SECOG round to expand the project from Chessline to Spicer. And this will reconstruct San Juan from Madison. We're trying to get it all the way up to Greenback within the next couple of years, if we're successful with either another grant or with some of our local funds under our pavement restoration program. But for all intents and purposes, this will reconstruct the roadway, new pavement. You'll have sidewalk infill along the entire east side, all the way up to Spicer, ADA improvements, storm drain improvements, transit connectivity and such. And again, this is funded by several SECOG grants, as well as local transportation funds and stormwater utility. And again, this is also supports council strategic goal. And that's kind of the highlight of the CIP. And before you was the recommended action. And I will take any questions. I know there are some errors within the document in terms of some of the grammatical and some of the numbers, which have been updated, and that will be reflected in the final draft, final document that does get published this summer.
Thank you very much. It's exciting to see all these projects that are coming in progress. Does the commission have any questions for staff?
I have a question. My question for tonight. It is pertaining to the San Juan Avenue Complete Street Project, phase one A and one B. And it does indicate that you would be building in the sidewalks from San Juan, excuse me, from Madison down to Spicer. But there is this, an area between Spicer and Sperry, which is only one block that still does not have sidewalks. And then, of course, the sidewalk picks up from Sperry all the way down to Greenback. Is that an oversight? Or would we intentionally just stop and leave that one little block there without the sidewalks on the east side?
I will have to look to see what the environmental included. Originally, we had design up for a longer stretch, but then constructionally for a certain stretch, I believe it was to, was it to Chessline? Chessline. And then, staff were successful, just within the last month, hearing from SECOG that we've received funds to complete that gap. But I think it only takes us, doesn't quite take us to Sperry, right? Just to Spicer? Yeah, if you can, sorry.
Yeah, because it was, that's the only section that would be left. It would be from Spicer to Sperry. And it's literally one block. And I thought maybe that was an oversight, so.
Good afternoon, Commission. Leslie Blumquist, General Services, your City Engineer. So we are currently, just due to the funding and the grant application process, trying to make a very competitive application. We did stop it at Spicer, but that is included in our phase two project scope to extend that sidewalk gap, fill up to Sperry, and continue the roadway improvements up to Greenback. That one little block is just very costly because it also includes the traffic signal modification there at Sperry. So with that added cost and where we were able to get the grant funding, we just weren't able to make it quite that far. But it is in our plans.
Okay. But not within this next five...
Not in the phase one, yeah.
Okay. And then my other, thank you for that clarification. The other question would be, does that improvement include, I know along Auburn, they, they took out all the utility pools and buried the utilities. That does include any type of utility changes?
We've done some, there'll be some utility relocation, but none of this includes undergrounding.
Underground. Is that in, potentially in phase two at any point?
Not likely. That, that has not been determined by council as a priority, knowing that it's taken us over twenty years to get Auburn Boulevard at the north end constructed and completed. So that would be a decision by council if we were to look at approaching that in the future at any other corridors.
Well, I'm happy to see that we're doing something in that, that corridor particularly, because I think it's been, you know, as, as well as Auburn, it's been one of those just kind of sightly areas up that road. So, thank you for that. That's all the questions I had.
I echo Chairman Van Duker's comment. It's great to see some of these projects coming forward. And perhaps with the projected downturn in the economy, whatever else, you might get some pretty aggressive contractors and some pretty good prices on, on projects. So, we'll see.
We'll see. Those numbers have been inflated quite a bit, and we haven't seen them stop.
But there may be both public and private, I think money is going to be constrained. And I think you might see some aggressive contractors.
Are there any other questions from the commission for staff? All right. Can I hear a motion?
I move to find that the city of Citrus Heights Capital Improvement Program for fiscal years 2023, 2024 to 2027, 2028 conforms with the general plan.
Seconded up?
Motion was made by Vice Chair Price and seconded by Commissioner Flowers. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item?
Correspondence by city staff.
I don't have anything. I just wanted to say that we don't have a meeting plan for the rest of May and probably not in June. So hopefully to see you in July. If I don't see you before the summer months, I hope your summer gets off to a great start. But we do have a lot of things in the works, so rest up.
It always seems like there's stuff coming down the pipe. All right. Then, in that case, I will, at seven oh two PM, close the meeting.